Ready, okay. Welcome to the October 21st Medfield Select Board Meeting. Just, most people here are gonna, if you're watching this meeting at all, you're probably watching it on video because we only have one reliable member in the audience for this meeting, so if you are tuning in, remember, you obviously know we're video recording, and I will remind our longstanding loyal member of the audience to identify yourself. If you should come up to the microphone and tell us where you live for purpose of that. But I won't have to tell about how the microphone doesn't amplify his voice, so don't think it's not working. Just to get started. Everybody in good shape?
Yep.
Just to get started, would take a moment to silence just to keep in mind the members of our service members who are serving to defend the country across the globe. Thank you. Okay, at 7:00 PM, we're gonna have a joint meeting with the Planning Board and the Select Board to fill the vacancy on the Planning Board with the current Associate Member Corinne Schiefer, but that'll be at 7:00. Our goal will be to get through the entire agenda before 7:00, so that that's the last item that we have on our agenda.
On your mark.
So with that, the very first item we had beyond that was to continue our discussion of the strategic town goals.
So what's in front of us is the cleaned up version of what we had last time.
I, yes, that's what we handed out at the Board and Committee night, and I gave a draft. We did the best we could to encapsulate the comments coming from all three of you at that meeting, but I'm sure there are a few things that we missed here and there, so I know Gus has some updates.
This was why I was late for our executive session.
So you handed this out at the Board and Committee thing?
We had it there in case anybody was looking, with a, very clear it was a draft.
Okay.
There were a few people who wanted to start reviewing it.
Okay.
So I'll let Eileen, you can start. I just passed out a highlighted copy of the pages that I had comments on simply to expedite my comments.
I'm not gonna lie, I did not realize this, I just pinged her tonight saying, "I see it's on the agenda." I thought we were getting the department head feedback, and then we were doing it.
No, we're gonna do this first, the department heads wanna see it.
My bad, but I'm here to listen and chime in here.
Pete, did you have anything?
I hadn't focused on this for tonight.
Good, I'm glad I made copies for you guys. I'm starting to feel vindicated for being 10 or 15 minutes late to the executive session. Let me, this, although it looks like there's a lot because of the highlighting, it's not. Most of this is editorial. There are two or three particular things, so if you, if you give me probably three minutes, I can get through everything here.
Okay.
First Christine, while you may not have gotten everything, I thought you did a pretty good job of reconciling all the inputs to date. I, so I'll walk you through this quickly, and then I don't think too much of, too much of this is anything other than editorial in nature, and Christine, you've got a copy of it.
Thank you.
So nothing on the first page, on the second page, still under Goal 1, minor thing, appoint the community preservation, the bullet, appoint a community preservation committee to advocate and educate the residents on the CPA. I, what I, what I did on that is I got rid of the advocate, and I got the, I got rid of the viable, and said, and replaced advocate to say, appoint a community preservation committee to develop a concrete approach and educate the residents on the CPA as a potential tool in Medfield. And what I was getting at is I don't think we want a committee that comes into this saying, "Our job is to be cheerleaders for the CPA." I actually think there's some questions around how we would go about implementing the CPA, one of, probably the most important, which is the 1%, 2%, or 3% decision. So I wasn't arguing, I'm not expecting them to be evaluating CPA as a concept, but basically come in with a recommendation on how we should do it, educate people about it, and then based on that, make the case before the residents that this is a viable thing for us to do. So that, that's two changes there, but that was the point. I think down under Goal 2, second, first bullet, I had proactively planned for the maintenance and upgrade of town facilities in alignment with the facilities master plan, and within the financial constraints of the town to support facilities maintenance and upgrade, that's just editorial. The fourth bullet did, I had down to double check that against my previous comments. This thing, it's a wording issue, which is the way this is worded now. It's not that it's particularly succession planning, the way it's written here, it was more the way I wrote it. So that was strictly, I wasn't against the point, it was just the wording didn't carry the, quite the right point. Third page, next to last bullet under Strategy, I just got rid of, this is the part, provide appropriate opportunities for the town's young people to observe and participate, and I said in-town government as opposed to town governance, because I don't think we're necessarily gonna be putting them in decision-making positions, although they could, it's just, that's editing. Fourth page, third bullet under Action Items, it was the same point I had before. This is one, expand the availability of recreational spaces for youth for unstructured activities. I don't know what that means, so.
We're still waiting for Kathy McDonald to get back to us on this section, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not categorically against it, I just didn't know. Then down in the subbullets, the third subbullet, expand the services offered for supporting student mental health via collaborating with the town's social service. I had originally said, I don't know what this means, and the reason I reacted to that, I realized, was the verb expand. So what I put in the note on the left is if this means coordinate the services offered for supporting, you know, if you're trying to improve services we're offering to better mesh, then I'm totally on board. It was the word expand that I was reacting to. I didn't know it was gonna get bigger, and I assume it would cost money. And then if you go down to the next highlighted thing, the solid black bullet says, develop six to eight units of housing for adults with intellectual disabilities. The bullets before it are all around sort of the planning and looking for appropriate places, so I don't think developing six to eight units of housing necessarily is in the action item list unless our action items are like five to 10 years timeframes, and I don't think they are. On the fifth page, again, this is strictly editorial under the Strategy at the top, support, protect, maintain attractive open space. I got rid of acquisitions, so I said, it should read, support, protect, maintain attractive open space to enhance recreational opportunities and maintain the open character of the town. Two points, number one, not all of our open space was acquired. And two, I didn't think that bullet really was intended to suggest we're going out looking as a goal to acquire more open space.
No, and I apologize, I believe at least two of you had, had, did a strike through on acquisitions, and I didn't pick it up.
Okay, then under Goal 5, environmental stewardship, kind of because of what I had to say up there, you'll see I just inserted one word that's more recently is the importance of maintaining a healthy, resilient, sustainable environment has become more apparent to all. Medfield's commitment to preserving and protecting its natural environment has only grown stronger. Medfield's designated open space as a percentage of its total land area is among, among the highest of any in town. I think we have other space, I'll, I'll take the north field north of the campus at the hospital, that is open space. It's not designated as open space.
Right.
And that's so, you know, I would say it's all the open space, including fields, which is not designated as open space, so that was that.
Actually, the term was protected, legally protected.
Well, then that, maybe that's the better word. I was just trying to differentiate formal open space from, we have more open space than that, which is formally designated or protected.
Right, the legally protected is in the 40% category.
So you get the direction.
Yep.
Under the action items, on the next to the last page, what I looked at under action items, one is the second major bullet, secure grant funding to conduct a financial analysis of climate adaptation and resiliency measures as outlined in the MVP. And then the subbullet says pursue grant funding for the update of the MVP. My question is, are we talking about pursuing two distinct grants?
Two distinct grants, but the, the grant funding for the update of the MVP, I had Maria look into it, and we're probably at least three years out on that, so we can pull that out as an immediate action item.
My main point was I could, I was thinking we were talking the same grant, but if they're truly separate, do whatever makes the most sense.
Yeah, I'll talk to Maria about that. Bill will talk tomorrow about it.
Under the Tomcaps, the sub-items under the Tomcap goals, the first bullet to me doesn't say anything. Support the Commonwealth's 2050 Goals, I don't really know what that means, and I don't consider, so I don't consider it an action item because I don't know what you do with that other than that we don't deliberately denounce the state's action goals. Next bullet down, ensure Medfield, it's, rather than saying ensure Medfield is on track to pursue, we just say ensure Medfield is pursuing the 2050 net goals using feasible strategies, so that's wordsmithing. The fourth subbullet, make climate considerations part of all relevant decision-making. I did, I had a problem with that one before because I don't know what all relevant means, but I think that just goes away. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make that part of those decisions that we incorporate that into our decision-making process, so this again doesn't really say anything that is meaningful, at least as I understand it. But that's not because I don't think it's gonna be a part of our decision-making, we've already done some of it. Then at the very bottom, just for, for what it's worth, I was at my college reunion about three weeks ago at West Point, New York, and I found, I came into contact with numerous actual spotted lanternflies. We don't have them in Medfield. We have another bug that has a bright red body that's small. These spotted lanternflies, they buzz at you, they hit you in the head, they're nasty. These things are big, they're, and they, they're fast. That's the other thing, you try to step on them and they scamper away.
My little electric tennis racket does wonders.
Yeah, well, so anyway, for what it's worth, if we want a list of what's really there, I have yet to actually see any reliable evidence that we have them here. And black swallow wart, when I saw the two Ws together, it still doesn't look right.
It's not right.
It's because there's a, well, I looked it up. There's a dash between the swallow dash wart. So there are two Ws separated by dash. And Pete, I think you had the comment about Norway maple. So as I killed the spotted lanternfly entry, I suggested that we add the Norway maple.
We can do that.
I mean, there are, there are tons of things that have been added to the list of invasive species.
Well, they should be all of them.
I mean, Norway maples were planted everywhere, there was a, burning bushes were planted everywhere, and there, we had some sort of.
Crimson king maple as well.
So this wasn't intended to be an exhaustive list, but what I kinda liked that you had done, Pete, is that we started to have certain bugs, but also certain plants, so I didn't wanna, I dropped a bug and added a tree just to kinda, I thought that was a useful balance as examples. On the final page, assist the Conservation Commission with outreach. I got rid of the word bring. I said to develop an appropriate policy for private wells compliance with drought restrictions. The reason I did that is I've seen at least one, I don't, I think it might, I think it's in Chris Potts's write-up, that's where it's at, where it's clear the Conservation Commission is working to try to figure out how to bring private wells into, into some sort of alignment with our compliance. If I were a private well owner, I, in fact, though it's a comment, I guess, I think that Chris included in a write-up, well, the private well owners are saying, "Well, you bring this up to a town meeting, where a minority would just get rolled." I don't think that's what the Conservation Commission is trying to do. I think, I think they're trying to find a path that weighs appropriately at least existing private well owners. And that's not to say that nothing will change. I'm just saying, the way we put it here, just said, "Oh, you just come in to comply with the drought, there's no room for wiggle room." So it's like Conservation Commission, come up with what you think is a fair policy for us to use and how we deal with potentially grandfathered well owners. And I just wanna make sure we didn't make it look like we'd made a decision. And then finally, at the very last bullet, improve the can recycling location. I just added "and promotional" information at the Medfield, or it could be educational information, but it was, again, just editing. So that's, I thought you did a good job, Christine. There's obviously not a lot here that's different than where, where you're at.
Do me one small, so when you do the final edits on this one, just so I get them in step.
We'll send it to you.
Yeah, and, because this is what will end up going out.
This is gonna go to all the boards and committees by the end of the week.
I thought it flipped off, I thought they were getting it, then we were gonna review it again.
Gotcha. Yep, nope, we'll get it all out to you before the end of the week.
Okay.
Okay. So it was sort of worth me being 10, 15 minutes late.
No, no, that was great, I know, that worked out fine.
Let's see, next we have second item on our agenda, Board and Committee Appointments. The first one is to appoint Dr. John Catigan, Jack Catigan, to the Board of Health as a full member of the Board of Health. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, so welcome aboard, Jack. For those who, like me, didn't know who he was, his background is very impressive. He's been involved in certain things, and one thing, I did send him an email. He was, at, at a point in time, he had a leadership position at Norwood Hospital, so.
Oh, wow.
So what I was happy, I sent him a message because his resume pointed out that he was the one who led the team to put the cardiac cath lab at Norwood Hospital. And the one comment I've gotten from people about the loss of Norwood Hospital is it was huge to lose the cardiac cath lab. So when I complimented him in his CV for that, he came back and said, "I have a particular interest in Norwood Hospital." And so I think, I'm guessing the two of you have been following, but I don't, I know, I haven't had the bandwidth to do it justice, so having someone on the Board of Health that knows the hospital and has the interest, I think would be great.
I think his father was one of the doctors who basically brought Norwood Hospital into the 20th century and made it a modern medical facility.
I gather he might have helped bring it into the 21st century, I guess. But anyway, anyway, it's great to have him on board. The next item is to accept the resignation from Tim Cutler as the backup plumbing inspector, and I think we'll do that. I'll do the whole thing, but I think we do the resignation first.
Let's do the resignation first.
And appoint, and appoint Scott Angelus as the repla, as the new backup plumbing inspector. So one assistance drop, or backup is dropping off, a new one is coming on.
So moved.
So, so first move to accept the resignation of Tim Cutler.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
And next to appoint Scott Angelus.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, that's done. And next we have a vote to sign a memorandum of understanding between South Middlesex Opportunity Council, S-M-O-C, and the Town of Medfield to establish a collaborative relationship to provide outreach, support, and application assistance for the Home Energy Assistance Program to eligible clients in the community.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
And the only comment I'll make, just if anybody heard that and wasn't sure what all that meant, is from what I got from the materials we had in the packet, this is an agency that helps make sure that the processing of home heating, home energy assistance, that that's properly processed, and I guess our role is to be the front end, as the intake organization, and they make sure that the people who are doing the intakes also know how to do that, properly keep track of records. So anybody that might be interested in taking advantage of this assistance program, sounds like this will help make it clear how to do it, and presumably that would make it more effective.
Yes, and this is a continuation, we've done this in the past, so this is a continuation of a program that Medfield Outreach runs.
Good. Okay, I have a motion to sign the memorandum of understanding.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Next is the vote to sign the letter to the Fire Marshal, who's, I forget where the Fire Marshal is, but it was kinda interesting, I guess there is a Fire Marshal.
Statewide Fire Marshal.
Statewide Fire Marshal, and it was like down in.
Stowe?
Stowe, somewhere Stowe.
It would be Stowe because that's where the Fire Academy is, yeah.
Notifying the change in delegation of authority for Fire Chief Bill DeKing. Just looking at this, it's, it's designating him as the Fire Marshal.
As the Fire Marshal for Medfield. Yep. We notified most of the agencies, we did not do this one when DeKing was appointed as Fire Chief, so.
All right, I heard so moved.
That's because he was on probation, but it looks like he's working out.
He's working out, okay, we're gonna keep him, we're gonna keep him.
All right, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, next is a vote to sign the waiver related to the Medfield Memorial Elementary School solar projects guaranteed commercial operation date. The commercial operation date is the date when the project is officially considered fully operational and capable of producing and delivering electricity. The waiver confirms that if the project is up and running by January 31st, 2026, the town will not cancel the contract and charge penalties. So we've got a contract that if the company doing this doesn't get it done fast enough, we can pull the plug figuratively. And if I read the waiver properly, all they're asking for is that we would not take any action so long as that they have gotten this thing up and running by the end of January 26th, 2026.
And they should have it running by the end of the year? They just asked for January just to make sure.
So the structure's up, but that's not actually working yet?
We're not, we're not live yet.
Ah, I did not know that, okay.
Once, once we sign all of this, they'll be able to go live.
Ah, okay.
All this has to be in place.
Now, the reason I'm being careful about this is when we get to the next item, I have a question.
Okay.
So everybody, what they're looking is one month that we would hold any actions we could take with regard to canceling their contract in advance. Okay.
Move to sign the waiver.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, so that's approved. The next item is vote to sign the Estoppel Certificate for the Medfield Memorial Elementary School Canopy. Our financing partner, REC Solar Commercial Corporation, is preparing to finalize a financing round and has requested an Estoppel Certificate for this project as part of its due diligence process. This certificate is a standard and routine step referenced in the contract intended to confirm that the agreements remain in good standing and unchanged, and that there are no known disputes. So we've had a couple of these, Marcus had to explain it each time, but basically I'm now looking at an Estoppel Certificate as just us confirming that we are not aware of any circumstances that would jeopardize the position of this financing organization in terms of compliance with all of the terms of our contracts. So that's telling the finance agency that things are just fine. You know, there's nothing that, you know, there's no, there's nothing in the woodwork that's gonna blow up. Here's the issue I had, is that if you read this Estoppel Certificate, it says that we are unaware of any force majeure situations. We just signed a waiver extending the deadline, and the second recital in that deadline basically says, "As provider believes that this termination right has arisen due to circumstances beyond the reasonable control of the provider." So this is an administrative question I have. We have just been made aware of a force majeure, it's a minor, it's inconsequential, shouldn't stop us.
Well, is force majeure defined in the document where, the second document that you referred to? Because it's just a catch-all term, in most cases, there is a provision that defines it, so you have to look at how they've defined it.
So my only point is, from an administrative standpoint, I think we need to know, all we really need to know is whether the Estoppel Certificate needs to say, "We're not aware of any force majeure other than this one-month extension due to circumstances beyond the provider's control." I'm looking at signing a correct document, that's all. It's not that, it's not a question of whether we will sign it.
I'd have, I would have to go back to Select and ask them.
Okay.
I don't know.
So you'd have to go back to the Estoppel Certificate itself to see whether there is a definition of force majeure. I assume somebody knows what the reason is that they want the extension.
Oh, the extension is our fault. We delayed the project. The school committee put a hold on the project, so instead of starting construction in '24, we did not start till summer of 2025. So the reason for the extension is definitely the town's fault.
So we know why we.
Yeah, so that would be a classic kind of force majeure for, for the contractor to rely upon.
It's a minute, it's a minor issue because it's only a one-month extension that they've asked for that we've granted. So I'm not, I'm not, my intent is not to jeopardize or refuse to sign an Estoppel Certificate.
Yeah.
My only intent is if we're gonna sign a legal document that says.
I would just take that fact to them and determine, and have them go back up the line and determine whether or not it needs to be referenced in the document.
Okay, it will delay us going online. Okay.
The, who signs the Estoppel Certificate? Is it all of us or just?
Depends how it's drafted.
I don't have.
Goes to record probably at a.
It's all of us.
Is it all of us?
Or at least the majority.
Well, then the packet, we're signing, all three of us.
Yep.
And then Jeff signs it, and the Michael LaFrancesca signs it.
Hold on, I do have it. So that's, paragraph one is where I'm asking the question, and it would be probably, yeah, it's all of us, okay.
Yep.
I mean, in the interest of time, I don't mind passing, approving this, because it's being, it's an administrative issue here.
Right.
Well, actually, it's reinforced because if you sign that and then try to use that delay as grounds of default, that would be a stop. That's, that's like classic a stop, so.
So what I, I mean, I don't mind approving it subject to clarifying.
Subject to clarifying that.
What changes, if any, need to be made to the Estoppel Certificate in light of this force majeure, this minor force majeure waiver that we.
Well, that would allow you perhaps to come in and each sign it once.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, yeah, that's what I'm getting at. I don't need to automatically extend this by two weeks just for this, it's just, I'll, I just want the legal document to be accurate, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll defer that, well, actually.
So the motion is invoked, but based on what.
So, so we have a motion, the motion would be to approve it pending clarification.
Subject to.
Subject to.
Yep, and then I'm gonna email them while we're here. They may be checking and may be able to give us an answer tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, so that's approved, subject to clarifying the question around the force majeure.
Okay.
But that's what I'm very intrigued by. I almost called you and I was like, oh, well.
Oh, for number eight?
Yeah, busy flash rentals, like, what, where the heck?
No, this is, this is the pedestrian safety grant, and this is to purchase the flex posts that we'll be putting in in the downtown. I don't have the plan in front of me, but we're trying to eliminate people cutting the corners and turning like Downjane's Avenue. We're trying to narrow some traffic.
So I, Mo sent this to me, I reviewed it, and I had the same question because I was thinking, these were gonna be posts that were gonna have an established designated bike lane, and I was going, man, the center of town, I can't see how this can help. If you recall, when the, when this, this is complete street, this was part of the Complete Streets original grant.
This is, it's, it's a shared streets and places grant, it came out of COVID.
It's 195 things, it's a lot, that's why when I saw it, I was like, 195, whoa.
Yep.
Were you here, I know Pete, you were on the board, because I'm, for some reason, it sticks in my mind, Sarah was the town planner when this first came up.
Sarah, Nick.
But one of the things that came out of this was that there, you can, for, it's traffic calming is what it's about, but the point originally that I recalled from Sarah at least was, you can literally paint, when you have a corner that's an intersection, like the corner of Brothers and South Street, that, that corner, if you paint a little, sort of, it looks like an island, you don't do a thing to the road, but you paint it to where it's not just part of the road. So it sort of narrows the mouth of all the, of the roads entering the intersection. Drivers seeing that color will automatically slow down, even though there's no physical barrier. So that was what was in my head, is what I remembered from that.
These are physical structures.
Well, you know that, but what I could remember was, what I'm getting at is when you're trying to picture where would they be, they're around all those corners that we had that I recalled were simply corners where we were gonna paint, but instead now in addition to the paint, these plastic things will outline.
Plastic things, if they're like, even if I think somebody taken a right on red at North and 109, that's also heavily pedestrian, so we're gonna have these little white sticks, not little, they're.
They're in the roadway though, they're not on the sidewalk, they're in the roadway.
Well, even if they're in the roadway, I mean, it's, I'll be intrigued to see where they, where.
They are removable, we, we anticipate.
There's a plan around here that was submitted.
We anticipate that once we put these out, and we are going to achieve our goal of traffic calming, and you are going to get a tremendous amount of calls that we have slowed traffic down in the center. So we're gonna have competing interests once these all go in.
But if you give me a.
Okay, I mean, I certainly trust, I certainly trust the chief and Mo, that they're not gonna put it and make it dangerous for, like, you know, the center of town, you see all the little kids at the end of the day, they don't, they don't go left or right, they cut across, which they shouldn't, like, if all the lights are supposed to be red, right? which they shouldn't, like, if all the lights are supposed to be red, right?
We're going to eliminate that, yeah.
But if, I'm thinking if these white things are up, is, is that impeding it, or, but, okay?
Nope. It should, but people are going to be upset, that traffic is going to be slower in the downtown.
Well, it almost made me late tonight, I know that. Twenty, South and one-oh-nine was...
But they are, they are removable, so what we are going to do is, we're going to test a number of them out this, this fall, or heading into winter. This fall, we're gonna test a few out, prove to the state that we have purchased them, we have installed a few of them, we're gonna pull them up for the winter season, so that we don't hit them with the plows, and then we'll put them out in the spring.
Where I could see where it would make sense, like, so we have twenty-seven and West Street, and to this day, if you're sitting at the traffic light on twenty-seven, heading towards the center of town, and I know the chief has painted it so that you're not supposed to go around people and take a right, you still do it all the time.
This is just in the downtown.
Oh, just in the downtown.
This is just the downtown.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah. And we'll...
Hundred and ninety-six of these things in downtown.
Yep.
Oh, jeez.
Yep, and we'll, I can show you the plan of where they're, where they're supposed to be going.
I have it, and I can't, Mo sent it to me, and I can't find it, so...
It was, it was actually presented here at a select board meeting.
Yeah, we've presented it three or four times as we've gone through this, this process.
He just sent it to me last...
We did it last fall.
Did we do it last fall?
We did it last fall. Yeah, we talked about it, we talked about taking the next step.
Oh, wow, okay, all right, yeah, because I was reading this, I was like, what the heck is this? All right. I'll go look up my notes.
Possibly there.
Vote to sign the contract.
Second.
Move to sign the contract.
All those in favor?
Maria's gonna email it to you, so you can have a copy. That way you don't have to look for it.
I can't find it anyway, so it didn't matter. It's, I have it, not in any of the logical places, of course. Uh, next, vote to authorize the town administrator to sign onto a letter advocating for the passage of the Municipal Empowerment Act.
So moved.
You have no description on that, we're all good?
So, uh, I had sent a copy of the Municipal Empowerment Act to all of you. We are being asked by multiple agencies for the select board to sign on. MAPC has asked, MMA, MMA sent out a letter to all of you today, asking us to sign on, so this is just giving me authority to take that one letter and we'll send it on to the delegation.
That's what I wanted people to hear, just so we didn't...
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so basically, I, I think D O R took the lead, but if not, another agency, they picked up where municipal modernization left off in twenty-sixteen. There was a whole lot of that that had been, for no particularly good reason, didn't go all the way through, and there was additional, uh, legislation identified that needed, that should be modernized, updated, to give more authority, et cetera. So they had actually solicited, uh, municipal governmental interest to make suggestions, they came up with a big laundry list, and then, this is essentially municipal modernization too.
Double pools and more tax revenue and all kinds of things.
Yeah, there's a bunch of good things in there.
Okay, second?
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. Uh, consent agenda, we have, what items do we have? We have three items with lots of sub-items. First, a request to allow the, the Boy Scout Troop Eighty-Nine to place signs at the transfer station, Main and North Street, South and Route twenty-seven, announcing the Christmas tree pickup and recycling program. Uh, they wanna put the signs up from November twenty-fifth through January eleventh. Uh, second, to use the transfer station on Sunday, January fourth, and Sunday, January eleventh, to dispose of the trees. Uh, that's the first item. Second, vote to allow the following sign request to advertise the MMA's spaghetti and snowballs fundraiser family dinner at the, putting the signs at the intersection of North Main and Route twenty-seven and South Street from November seventeenth through December second.
Oh, and spaghetti and snowballs, you have to go out and eat it on the street.
Yeah, it's kinda, we have to work on how these things are worded, because it sounds like people are gonna be eaten out of the street. The third item, vote to allow the following sign request to advertise Hail Education, uh, vote to allow the following signs, uh, to advertising Hail Education at the intersection of North and Main Street and Route one-oh-nine and Hartford Street from November sixth to the twentieth, to advertise Hail's summer program registration, from December third to the seventeenth, to advertise Hail's school vacation days and winter family fun day, and from January second to the sixteenth, to advertise Hail's winter family fun day and summer program registration. So, I guess A and B are, the first two dates are one, and then the next, and then the third date is both.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Uh, do you have any citizen comments?
I do not have any citizens' comments.
Okay. And, it's gonna work. Uh, let's see, no meeting minutes, town administrator update.
I have quick, uh, just a quick few updates. Um, just thank you again to all of our board and committee members that came out to board and committee night. Thank you to Brittany, Cameron, Tracy, and Marion for really putting all the work in on that, but I completely forgot to thank somebody the other night, um, and I need to thank Bill Pope.
Oh, sure.
Who provides the Zulu gallery to us at no charge to do that event. Uh, he wasn't able to be there with us during the event, but he did help everybody set up and, and get that together, so thank you again to Bill for doing that for us. Um, warrant committee really kicks off their meeting on October twenty-eighth, uh, for their budget process for the year, and we are looking at providing them with a two-year forecast of both revenues and expenditures, so we can plan out what we think are gonna be two very difficult years financially. Um, a shout-out to Medfield Energy Committee, they're having their public forums on the opt-in stretch energy code tomorrow at five PM and seven PM, both of those are on Zoom. And then, just a reminder, I can't believe I'm saying this already, but the annual town meeting warrant opens on November eighteenth.
Wow.
And closes on January thirteenth. So, and that's it for me tonight.
Uh, just a minor point, again, kudos to Chris Potts for her detailed write-ups. I think the, the education sessions, the fifth was for contractors, so people that are kinda looking for the tech, so...
Yep.
If you're just somebody like me in town that's just curious to hear, you wanna tune in for the seven PM one, not the five PM one.
Yes.
If you're doing your own work, maybe you want to turn to the five PM one to figure out what you have to comply with, but, uh, yeah. Uh, let's see, uh, next meeting dates, uh, November fourth and eighteenth, and December second and sixteenth. Select board member reports.
All righty, please. All right, so I was, uh, I supported the Medfield TV Spooktacular this past Saturday. It was a great event, new location this year, they had it in Hinckley Pond, fantastic location, massive turnout, um, super cute costumes for all the different age groups, and I liked the fact they had all the little tents around, so different people could be promoting different items. Matter of fact, I did not even know that Tracy Clink makes granola.
Granola.
Really good.
Very good granola.
I bought a bag of that, it was very, very good. Um, and while I was at that, I could not make the Eagle Scout ceremony, so I do wanna pass along my congratulations to Medfield's newest Eagle Scouts, Daniel Kemp and Benjamin Simoni. Um, I, I sent you a note, but I knew I couldn't make it. That's all, I think I've only, I think in my four years, I think I've, that might be my first, maybe second one I missed, so I do enjoy that. Um, and then the board and committee night was super fun. Um, uh, the, this week coming up, I've got the Affordable Housing Trust meeting Thursday night. Um, and then, I do have a comment, and I don't know, I, I don't know whether this should go to Katie, whether it goes, whether this should go to, um, oh my God, I'm drawing a blank on the gentleman that does all the maintenance, uh, the, the director.
Rob Quinn?
Rob, excuse me. Is, so last Thursday, I walked with the, the new person at Medfield Outreach, um, Chrissy.
Mm-hmm.
And we went from the high school to the Medfield, brand new. How much money did we spend on the Medfield tennis courts? Half a million dollars?
Uh, I don't know, I'd have to look it up, yeah.
Lot of money, that's all I know. And, and what's sad is that, the, and I would make this recommendation, is to prevent all of the brush from coming back onto the court, well, we were standing there, so much of the clippings from the shrubs that are around it ended up on the court like that thick, and I'm like, okay, we just spent half a million dollars and we were gonna get rain the next day, and that was all just gonna sit on the court, and, you know, that's the type of stuff that starts to corrode these courts and gets the mold, and I, the same thing's happening at the high school courts, that it's not even a year old, and you got pine needles already building up, and I don't know, I mean, it's gotta be hard to manage, but that's a lot of money that we spend, to have these things potentially start to go to crap, because we're letting stuff land on the courts, and, you know, it's the material of the courts that need to be kept up, otherwise, they're just crap.
I will, I'll send a notice to Katie and Rob.
I've got pictures of it, if they wanna see what I'm, and they could, the, the Metacomit courts could easily be fixed by just having something put up this high across the very bottom of the, of the fence, and then nothing can blow in off the ground, um, but it was crazy.
I'll talk to Katie about that. Rob will be anything on the school property, Katie would be anything for parking.
The pine needles are horrible over there right now.
Okay. I'll let them know.
Just, we spent too much money. Um, and then, um, for anyone that watched my little furry friend here last meeting, my little guy did pass away, so the first, first dog of Medfield has sadly passed on. That is it?
The, George Lester of the Medfield Forest and Trails led a walk along the Bay Circuit Trail, I caught up with the very end of it. Good news for me is that I know where the Bay Circuit Trail goes over the, over the property up around the hospital. Um, there was a energy committee meeting, uh, and, uh, there was an update on the energy manager that Christine's looking to hire decarbonization, the specialized code that's been mentioned tonight, the meeting's tomorrow night, the informational meeting on that. The energy committee voted to support the specialized code, that actually hadn't been voted on by the committee before. Um, and the committee's looking to have a flip-the-switch program for the memorial school canopies, the, the, and I think that that's a little bit dependent on what we just voted to do tonight, so that's good that we voted to go forward with that. Um, high school canopies apparently need to confirm the location, there was concern expressed over the fact that the incentives are disappearing, those are time limited, and if we don't get, go forward with that, we'll miss, we'll miss out on some of the monies, some of the savings that the town can, can affect. Um, let's see. Um, Medfield Foundation had a meeting, and a lot of that had to do with planning for the Angel Run. I'll just remind everybody that the Angel Run is the Medfield Foundation's signature fundraising event to raise monies for people in need in town and, and other Medfield Foundation needs. It's on, it's on Sunday, December seven, at the high school this year. You need to register by November two, if you want the shirt. Brittany, Marion, and Tracy did a, just a spectacular job of putting together the, the board and committee appreciation night at the Zulu, and, uh, a nice Boy Scout, Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Dan Kemp and Brian Simonini. And that's it.
Uh, I think Pete's covered some of the main events. Two, two Saturdays ago, I did do the hike with George, primarily because we've had the discussions around developing the land south of Hospital Road, and I, once, once a year ago, tried to bring two high school classmates back to Ice House Road on the Bay Circuit Trail. Yeah, we were, we were doing some bushwhacking, we just couldn't find the trail, because I didn't know for sure. So, did see where it is, it's actually a very well-laid-out trail. As I suspected, the trail runs along sort of the edge of the property down, on the, on the Route twenty-seven end of it. Uh, it actually, part of it is the cross-country course, uh, some of it's cut, it's almost, you'd think it wasn't the trail, only because there's these well-manicured lanes for the cross-country team, but it is part of the trail. Uh, so, the main thing I was happy about there is that my impression that the trail is not like running through the center of the property that we're talking about, looking at. It's not, it's over down. The only thing, I know, Pete, I think you had talked about, you know, thinking it would be good to look at the land that's way back there. Uh, if we did that, that is pushed up against where the trail is, uh, and I just casually would note that, that if we were all the way back there, where there's some piles of dirt and stuff like that, uh, that would probably be the maximum, most expensive place to put infrastructure into, so we'll see when we get to looking at what's possible, the land itself might be okay, but, uh, that could potentially interfere with the trail, but not, not the areas we were looking at. Uh, the volunteer recognition night was good, every, both Eileen and Pete have called out people, and Christine have called out people who deserve credit, but there is one more point of credit. I have discovered, as I brought two of those cookies home, my wife Jean agrees with Christine, those, those cookies from Perfect Strangers are phenomenal, uh, so...
Super cheese.
Yeah, everything was good, but, uh, your judgment, your judgment is, is held in high regard at our house. Uh, and then, uh, finally...
They're all gone. They disappeared.
And then the, the Eagle Court of Honor on Saturday, I made sure to, you know, pass on your congratulations and regrets, but, and they were all impressed that not only was the select board showing up for the Eagle Court, but we were doing other things, parallel processing things here in town, as judges for the Halloween Spooktacular. So that went well, it was good, good Court of Honor, two, you know, two great scouts, uh, decent turnout, and so, another good event with Troop Eighty-Nine. That's all I have. It's, uh, three minutes past seven, I see that Teresa's here, I'm not sure how the rest of the planning board, the...
Yeah, I have, I have some, I have some remotely, we're gonna bring them up right now.
Teresa, the goal here was that we were gonna get everything else we had out of the way, so at seven o'clock, this would be the last thing, and...
So what's...
Very impressive.
We are gonna have seven o'clock meetings.
We didn't even start on time, which is even more impressive.
What's left of Sarah's term?
Uh, yeah, still the next election, I think.
Maybe thirty, twenty-three, sixty.
She's, she's up for, she would've been up for reelection anyway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we got Seth Paul, we got Seth Paul.
I have Seth Paul.
But I think what the plant, we were already open, but the planning board has to officially open.
And the problem is, you're, you're doing a, basically a Zoom-type meeting, right? The rest of your members are on Zoom.
They are.
So they need to each identify themselves by name.
Yeah, we need to open up the meeting, call to order.
Yeah, so, we'll go ahead and do that for the planning board to, for a joint meeting between the planning board and the select board, um, the same meeting, so I call the meeting of, uh, this, uh, October twenty-first at seven oh six PM, um, and we'll do a roll call, so Paul McKechnie?
Indicating who's by...
Paul McKechnie's present.
By, by Zoom.
Remote.
Remote, you need to say that. You need to each, whoever...
Paul McKechnie's here remotely.
Seth?
And Corinne?
She's not part of yours, she's not, nope.
Yeah, 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 so...
Not yet.
Not yet. And Teresa James, um, present in person. So, um, we come before the select board this evening to, um, well, first of all, as you are aware, Sarah Limkey, after many years of the service and much, many years of wisdom, um, had to, gave us a letter of resignation, um, and her term was up, coming up due here in the spring, for the spring election, and as we know, we have a wonderful curation of associate members who actively participate in our meetings to get to know the planning board process, understand the issues that come before our towns, and hear our cases. And, um, after speaking with Corinne Schaefer, who has been an associate member for about a year now, if I remember correctly, my dates are fuzzy, but, um, we have, we met as a board two weeks ago, I think it was, and, um, we all, and asked Corinne if she would be willing to step up and take Sarah's place for the rest of that term. And so we come before with you, I mean, she gratefully accepted, and so we all come before you to, um, ask for a nomination.
We need a nominator and then they, then every, then...
Right.
The chair of the select board will call, will vote.
Will we, we need a second of the nomination or is it just a...
I don't think...
We do, we, we need a nomination and a second, yeah.
So, so, from the planning board, looking for a nomination.
We couldn't hear you before.
The tension is rising, the chairs.
I will second, uh, non, uh, motion.
And roll call vote, Seth? Paul?
Yes.
And Teresa's yes.
And then you need your...
A vote of the select board, Eileen Murphy?
Yes.
Pete Peterson?
Aye, aye.